All right, welcome to Cleveland Heights City Council Committee of the Hall meeting. It's January twenty first, twenty twenty five, six P M. Eddie, would you call the role?
Posh.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Kuda.
Here.
Tom.
Here.
All right, um, before we go into executive session, I just want everybody to note ahead of the agenda. It says, should council be unable to complete this discussion? You know, we want to knock off the stuff that we put off from last meeting tonight after city council meeting. Hey, you know, we could have a good hour and a half and be done with it. So with that, uh, warning, uh, Craig, would you mind, uh, reading?
Not at all. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session for A, to consider the lease or sale of city-owned real property and to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance, or for negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance as needed to protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds in connection with the economic development project. And B, to prepare for, conduct, or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees or their representatives concerning such employees' compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Eddie, would you call the role?
Tom.
Aye.
Kuda.
Aye.
Petrus.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Maddox.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Posh.
Aye. All righty, we are out of executive session, uh, and we'll continue on with agenda. Next is legislative review. So the first piece of legislation has, uh, for first reading for consideration of adoption. Resolution number twelve twenty five, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Frank Novak and Sons to furnish labor materials and equipment necessary for sandblasting painting and related services for Cumberland Pool. Any questions on that piece? I know I do. Yes, fine.
I was curious as to which fund will be used for that particular expenditure.
That is a good question, dude.
I don't know.
So we'll have to get back to you on that.
That's fine, thank you.
Oh, you know what? This email came kind of late. Here's, um, the quote. If anybody wanted to see that. Any other questions? So in the contract, which we don't have, what does it say about when they have to finish the work?
Well, I think that's the reason that it's, um, requested for a consideration of adoption is so that it's done in time for the season. I don't have a date.
Yeah, I guess what I'm concerned about is, is why we didn't do this like so that September, they can get moving. Cause the forty degree, the, the, the temperature thing here, I forget where it is.
So there was, Mr. President, a prior piece of legislation that, um, was adopted to permit this work to be done on a, an understanding that turned not to, turned out not to prove out, which was that there was a source well contract for the entire part of it. And in reality, it was just for paint materials. And so as a result, the contract to be properly executed needed to be revisited and couldn't be just pushed into the source well envelope. So that's the reason that it's coming to council.
Yeah, this, um.
No painting would be done this week, I can assure you.
I can see that. Well, I suppose, you know, I mean, I wish I had an idea. I mean, you know, obviously this needs to be done and that's not the question, but.
The director of Parks and Rec is very focused on this and I know he's worked with the mayor and the city administrator to, you know, to ascertain that this can be done and to ensure that it will be done in time for the season.
Just as for the last memo, I'm not sure if it's remained the same, but as the memo from the previous piece of legislation, it says it's from a capital group of fund.
Thank you.
Makes sense.
All right, uh, for second readings, you know, the resolution approving mirrors point line up. Rodney Harrison, as director of, uh, finance. Yes?
Mr. Feltz has learned a whole lot since joining the organization. Is there any amount of time that we anticipate having him still be a part of the organization while Rodney gets caught up to speed?
I don't know if Mr. Feltz has already left. We're, I'm kidding. No, no, we fully anticipate that Mr. Feltz will remain with us for a period of time. We haven't determined exactly what that period of time is, but we do want a transition period, both to add capacity while Mr. Harrison gets up to speed, uh, should council approve his appointment or, um, and, and also to, to help Mr. Harrison, uh, get up to speed in, in our systems and work with us to do what we need to do.
Yeah, I mean, I assume somebody's got to do the financial analyst job as well as kind of directing the.
We've, we've gotten applications for that position and I'm looking forward to, um, you know, bringing candidates in to interview for that position as well.
All right, um, I'm going to move on to fourth readings. Well, there's one fourth reading. An ordinance, uh, this two four four, twenty twenty four, ordinance enacted in section one three five one, point three five of the codified ordinance of Cleveland Heights, entitled tenants' rights and responsibilities. Petrus, did you want to say anything?
Sure. So from the time whenever it was first introduced, we made a couple of changes to, um, to accommodate concerns raised by folks. Some of those are regarding the distribution of it. So for example, it initially would require people to distribute a paper copy to everyone. Now they'll distribute a digital copy to folks. And going forward, um, the legislation would have required that everyone be provided a paper copy. Now, um, if you, for example, use an online system like Doc Design, you're able to provide a digital copy. So it should be a lot easier, the distribution should be a lot easier. Also with regard to the penalty, the law department wrote it up so that it would be a first degree misdemeanor. We had conversations and settled on a minor misdemeanor. And happy to answer any questions.
Which is a, a maximum fine of a hundred and fifty dollars with no deal time possible for a minor misdemeanor. That question was raised recently, so I just wanted to.
Even though the rest of the code has a first degree misdemeanor.
All right, how's it, Maddox?
Do you, do you have any, any feelings about in, in terms of how we're handling potential tenants versus folks who've actually signed a lease being provided for this? Cause I know this, this is consistent feedback that we've got in terms of, um, some of our landlords asking why for potential tenants, would they be required to do this? Any thoughts on that, that, that portion specifically?
Yeah, that, that wasn't something that was specifically requested of the law department, but was included. And, um, it only has to be provided if they're like giving a contract to someone.
Okay.
So if someone just comes to look at the property, they don't have to, you know, provide it. But if it's the case that they offer a contract to someone, that's the point whenever they would provide the information. In one other small change that we made, actually at the last housing committee meeting, originally drafted, the legislation would require that the information be distributed annually. We modified that slightly so that it's upon renewal of a lease. Most of those happen to be twelve months, um, but that was one other change that we recently made.
Council, Larson?
Yeah. Because we did that, I would assume that your question will be answered ultimately. We start this in July, right?
I believe that it's July.
Implementation date?
If it were passed tonight.
If it were passed tonight, then in, when people renew their leases, they should be getting this tenants' responsibilities and landlords.
Yeah, and it actually does require that there be an initial distribution for existing tenants.
Okay.
And that was initially a requirement that they receive it in paper. We've updated it so they can receive digital copies so that if a landlord happens to have email addresses with people in their buildings, rather than going around distributing a paper copy to everyone, with this initial distribution, they'll be able to digitally distribute it.
I don't know if we spoke a lot about in terms of rolling that out and communicating that to landlords and what that looks like in that, in that timeframe. Are you still comfortable with the timeframe and making sure that they can get this understanding if they have any questions? That given that Lee, where you, are you comfortable with that, the window?
I mean, I defer to the administration on that. Like I would be happy to be a part of that. If you would want, I'd be happy to, you know, reach out to individual landlords, make them aware of that. If you happen to have any thoughts on that.
Sure.
Would like to hear them.
I think, uh, there are a couple of different ways that I would expect that we would do this. One is sort of direct, uh, communication with the landlords, the people who are listed, um, in our systems. All of the people who have rental occupancy permits are the only people who are supposed to be renting their spaces. And so that direct communication, but also I think that it makes sense for us to do sort of, you know, general emails and social media posts and those sorts of things, um, when, when we roll this out. And then additionally, for those people who are, um, coming in even potentially for building permits, for renovation to spaces, we can provide at least, uh, a notice that if they are going to be renting out those spaces, that they would be respected to do this as well. So I don't think that it'll be too overly burdensome to the administration to provide that kind of information in any of those ways.
Thank you.
Will it be electronic and paper?
Well, our, our hope is that the city will put it on its website so that it'll be digitally available to anyone who wants to go there.
No, I'm just thinking of people who may not have access to it. Well, there also being paper copies, maybe somewhere in city hall where people don't have it digitally, they can come to cover copy.
I mean, I, I think that that's a great idea if the administration is interested in printing some of those out for folks who might be interested in that. If a landlord executes its lease on paper or if they don't have, you know, like an email address for someone, that's a situation where they're required to provide a paper copy.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we touch every aspect of people having access to website, I mean, uh, digital and not.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
It says on the cover sheet, there's, I don't understand how this could cost no money.
Well, I'm, so, um, the, the requirement is that the, the property owner provide the, the paper. That's the one cost. And if a lot of property owners happen to, you know, distribute their leases digitally, that's even a lower cost for them. But to the city, it's up to the administration whether they want to print these, make them available to folks. They could certainly choose to print them, have them onsite and make them available to folks if they want to. But that's not required at the legislature.
I see, not required from the legislation. That, that answers my question.
Well, there, I mean, there is a requirement that it be made available.
Right.
But, um, I mean, that should be at the minimums cost.
And, and I believe that in all likelihood, this is something that, um, we probably wouldn't want to print like, you know, thousands of them just to keep them on hand or anything like that.
Right.
So this could be sort of a just-in-time printing kind of thing for somebody who absolutely can't use a computer.
For pennies essentially.
Yeah.
All right, Eddie.
Can I just go back real quick to, sorry, to the first ones to, uh, twelve twenty twenty five? I did fix the, uh, resolution number that's being repealed is two nineteen twenty twenty four, uh, two twenty seven. Thank you for pointing it out. Want to let you know.
All right, and, um, then we have a consent agenda with four items. First one is for Black History Month, that's thirteen. The second is National Donor Day, that's fourteen. Fifteen is American Heart Month and sixteen is National Freedom Day. All right. Next, we'll move on to committee reports.
Also, a woman, Marcy.
So, fun, there you go.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you, Mayor Saren, for all the financial information that you sent us and to share with council and post on the city's website. Adding that Frank Eisch from Tuning will be attending the finance committee meeting tomorrow to updates, uh, update us on any information from the independent CPA that they may have to share tomorrow at twelve thirty. I have a question for you. Have you all had a chance to look at the information that Mayor Saren sent?
Yes.
Okay. We have seventeen requests for information on that list that was distributed. And if you cannot attend, I have a favorite to ask. If you can't attend the meeting tomorrow, will you please send me, email me what you think you, you would like to still see? If your request wasn't complied with or are you, no expansions. This is, this is what we have asked for.
Okay.
Final. So, um, send me the email by twelve o'clock tomorrow. I'll have to leave at twelve fifteen. I'll pick it up here when I get here. And also I would like to note, we'll be discussing the mayor's appropriation ordinance tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon. If you're not able to attend tomorrow as well, please let me know if you have any questions regarding the information in that ordinance. Have the unaudited financials requested by the state auditor been sent, Mayor Saren?
So, just to clarify, the information that was requested that we are working to provide to the private auditing firm, that will then be, um, analyzed and sent to the state auditors, is not all exactly financial information, um, in the sense that it's not necessarily related to the budget. And so some of it is other information related to other.
Bureau, like bureau workers' comp forms, uh, liability insurance forms, other things that had, just, just did not get forwarded in. Mr. Feltz has been working off a list diligently and checking them off. And then Scott has been emailing me back, us back, okay, I need this. So it's, it's not like it's A through C. You get them A through C and then they want D and F because it opens up, so it's, there's an end in sight, but it's just a lot. But I can't tell you how, how, what else is, you know, working through that. So getting there.
We are getting there. I think, um, as soon as I heard about this, um, I started reaching out and developing a list of outstanding, um, items. And I started making calls, uh, to get some of those things. So, you know, we got some things pretty immediately and were able to send those off. Some things were a little bit more difficult to, to get our hands on. And some of them were things that we had to generate as well, um, uh, or, or work with somebody to generate. So we're, but yeah, we are making progress, um, in terms of when exactly?
There's not an exact date. I, I don't have one. I know it's, I know it's quick because he's getting something to him every day. But like I said, there were two new pieces just today. Oh yeah, this too. And he, and he's, so it's, and they're not onerous, but sometimes the data is not there to be able to do it. And it could be software, that's a whole other issue.
Yeah.
But, and like I said, Willie's doing an excellent job of, of piecing that together.
Yeah.
And then also like status on the year-end financials?
Well, actually, Mr. Feltz is on his way up. I know that we are, um, in terms of the sort of the broad understanding of how we ended the year in terms of fund balances, that's one thing. Um, and that's already in the, the information that's on the website. But the, I think, February twenty ninth, when we were, when we got counsel the end of year, for twenty twenty three in twenty twenty four. Um, and generally the reason for that is that, you know, we have to make sure that everything for twenty twenty four is done and it usually takes a while. But we are, I know Mr. Feltz is working through that. We were hoping to have that done. I suppose he can probably explain where we are on the yearly financials and.
Feel conspicuous coming in here?
Yeah, it's like I came in the church like.
So they, they, the, the question was related to, uh, your financial report. And I was supposed to email that thing to you and I forgot to, so let me, I'll do that now.
Okay, so this is where we are. We have, I checked the report that you got last year and you got that report February twenty eighth. And that was a year-end report for December.
November?
The journal entries are ready, but all the reports haven't been, been run and put together. You guys are accustomed to getting as far as the performance and where we are at the balances and the funds. That's, all of those things is pretty much ready, but we just have not put all the package together. But the accountants have been working hard to get all the entries in. We feel comfortable where we are with the fund balances. I was just looking at the, reviewing the, the bank reconciliation as of November. So that looks pretty good. It had a two million dollar fairing on it, but don't be, she wasn't finished yet. She actually told me to get out of it yesterday. I was in it reviewing it and she told me, she called me on my cell phone and said, hey, get out, I've got to do some work. So, uh, having said that, everything is going well. It's just that the reports are not ready. And the mayor and I talked before we came up and he said, we'll just put the reports together for November and then, um, maybe stick to the same terms as you had last year for, um, for February, February close and the reports that you got February twenty eighth.
That's precisely the question I was going to ask. It sounds like we're rushing purposely intentionally, but should the expectation be that we're looking at the, towards the end of February so that your processes are in line to clean this up like it has been?
I mean, honestly, that two months is a long time. I got some things today from, from legal and it's like a fifty thousand dollar expenditure. And I told him, I said, look, every time we, every time we, you know, approve an expenditure, it could impact our, our funds that we made zero by the end of the year. So none of them were negative. None of them were negative, but if we start getting, you know, these, these expenditures after the fact, at some point we're going to have to cut that off.
So just as a follow-up then for, for council while we're here, I think this is helpful for us for tomorrow's conversation. If this is something that is, you're, you're working through with this process, I guess I would like to know from council, is this something that we're saying we can put off and, and wait on and continue to have this budget conversation? Or is there anyone at the table that's saying this is something that's really critical for them to move forward? Cause it sounds like with last year's budget, we had it approved before we had this information. So I don't, I don't want them to rush through this to get us something that we don't necessarily need to get a full year's budget approved. If we can focus our attention on another piece and get this in that normal timeline, unless there's something I'm missing. For council, I think it's helpful for us to be able to move some things off the side and say, what is absolutely necessary for us to get that twelve month budget approved if we're working through this tomorrow?
Well, see, that's what I thought the seventeen, you know.
Yeah, but if I recall, this, this is on that, on, on that list, is it not?
Yeah, that's, that's my point. My point is, isn't that list supposed to be?
But my concern is that that's not something we normally would have had to approve the twelve month budget in the first place. So we're, so we're.
October, I think the October and November financials, um, were always something we had. I know we had it last year. I, I can't say always.
Yeah, that's my, that's my, are we okay with that so that we can move on from this is what I'm asking. Are we okay with what they can provide in terms of November and December or in?
Well, I think October and November would be.
October, November, right?
Yeah. That, that's, that's what, I mean, the only reason I think we put December on there if we, if, if it is indeed on the list was because if we're, if we're usually getting the, the month before's financials, the first week of the next, uh, month, well, now it's January twenty first, you know, that's why.
January is different though.
I, I.
And that's why I would like to clean up that list because I know some of you won't be here tomorrow. And since, like transparently, I don't have a single question on this list. And so it's a little frustrating for me to have this conversation when the people who have questions aren't necessarily at the table when we're trying to get this through. Cause sometimes there's information that we're, we're getting provided and we're thinking we're, we're, we're more than comfortable to move forward. Many of the people with those questions aren't here. And for me, this is one of those things. If we know that we've asked for December and we're comfortable with removing, I'd rather know that going into tomorrow. I don't, I don't want to keep asking for things and because we're hearing disinformation, we're okay, we're shifting. And I want, I wanted this, this list to be as tight as possible so we get through. So if we're okay with that and December's indeed on there, I, I would like to have that removed and say, we're, we're comfortable with this. That one can check off this list so that we can just get through this. But I don't know if that's possible if the people who have questions don't show up to these meetings. It, it just, it gets a lot more complicated for, for me and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to come, but I, I understand what you're saying. Go ahead.
So it's, in order to get accurate fund balances by the end of the year, you really need to have your finances done for the, for the previous year. Now, I'm okay working from estimates for December. So if we can get some very, very solid estimates, but, you know, I feel like we don't, until I think I see those reports that you've come up with, I think it's premature for me to say that I'm okay with this. Yeah, I don't want to hold up the budget. And I also don't want anybody to rush through it, which would cause mistakes. But I mean, it is sort of the duty of the finance department to get this stuff done. And if it's normally done in February, I get that. I can accept that. I just want to make sure what we're working with are really solid projections.
And perhaps, you know, by the time we actually get the, set that, that checklist, um, checked off. And, and, and that's something I would like to, Mayor, I'm calling you in a second. That is something I would like to see happen tomorrow and I will be there. But I would like to, I mean, I want it, I want there to be agreement on what the status is of each one of these. Because it's seemed to me from an email exchange I had that we don't share necessarily what the status is.
That's my issue with our last meeting. We walked away feeling pretty comfortable about that, but folks who weren't there were not. And I didn't realize that. And that's, that's the concern that I'm having to continue to have these without having some type of direction. Because sometimes the administration is offering color or clarity for a question for someone out at the table. And we don't know if that's acceptable enough to move forward. And that, that's my problem is that we're coming in the middle of the day to do this. But I feel like we're not even helping ourselves at this point or providing clarity to administration unless we're all going to be at this table who, who are asking those questions. Because I want to know when they respond to that question, that checklist, that it's acceptable when I'm at this table so that we can move on. I thought that's what we did at the last time, but it turns out that some of the folks who weren't here were not comfortable. I, I don't want to continue to do that.
Well, I would admit that, that watching it is not the same, you know, because you can, you can ask a question that you, you know, obviously couldn't ask. Go ahead, Mayor, and then we'll go to.
Yeah, so, um, I think the, if you go to the twenty twenty five appropriations ordinance webpage, there is that twenty twenty five fund summary document that breaks down the estimated ending balance that you're expecting based on budget revenues and budgeted expenses for twenty twenty five. In that last column there, you know, we're looking at around eighty-seven million, uh, unencumbered fund reserve balance at the end of twenty twenty five for all funds and around thirty-two million right now for general fund. And think the, the, in terms of a relatively good estimate for our starting unencumbered balance and our ending unencumbered balance for, um, for all of these funds, I think that's probably the best estimate we're going to get right now. You know, if there, you know, some, some changes around the margins, it's probably not going to be terribly substantive or, or, you know, it'll be relatively small changes for end of twenty twenty four. If anything comes up that, that we're not, you know, that aren't included in this estimate, it's not going to move the needle. But it's, it's sort of similar to the conversation that we had about, um, you know, any capital project that we do, any street project that we do. Like we're budgeting what two point three or so million dollars in Fund two oh two? No. Two oh one. You know, uh, street construction, we're budgeting about two point three million dollars in expenditure. And the list of information that council wanted was. Capital expenses based on real numbers, not estimates. And we would have to bid out all of our street projects, get bids back and select somebody. In order to get real numbers. So like we have to do, you can't budget based on real numbers for that sort of thing. Because that's just not how the world of, you know, contracting works. For budgeting. And so so that's the sort of thing that we we, you know, maybe need a little bit more clarification on from council. I think there was some of that discussion at the finance committee. I know that I've had some. Uh, discussions with some of the council members about that as well. Um, there so there might be a little bit of clarity necessary on a couple of those things. But I also wanted to just express for the record that that webpage, the twenty twenty five. Budget information webpage with the fiscal year twenty twenty five appropriations ordinance and backup information. Is not complete. I know that we still have to provide sort of department by department breakdowns. So just so you know, I'm not expecting that this is the complete set of information.
So I I'm gonna call on you, but I just I want to connect this. Because you just said this, Mayor. So in in twenty twenty three, when we did the budget and Collette Clean Scale had that, what I would call an immaculate. Presentation section in the budget book. I mean, she had, you know, the list of every street that was gonna be paid and a budget amount at the end. Are you telling me that she had all that stuff bid out at that point?
No, those were estimates.
Well, I mean, so like, okay, so I now I see what you're saying. You're and we can look at that and see how close the real number, the actual numbers were.
Yeah, and some of those projects, you know, came in below. Some of those projects came in above. Uh, some of those projects came in uh, above to a threshold that we needed to rebid the project or redo the estimate. Hell, we've been in a situation where project we bid out, we budgeted for, didn't even get bid on. And so we had to wait until. You know, so these things are are estimates and and I think another thing to note is that some of these projects we might not even get to. You know, that happens as well. Uh, we may not be able to digest all of the the capital improvement that we budget for. Um, as I think was the case in twenty twenty four. And we still will be doing a whole heck of a lot of ARPA sewer work and that kind of thing o- over the next couple of years or. So they, I mean, there's there's gonna be. Administrative hurdles to get over to even get the contracting done. So, yeah, we can, we can do estimates and that's what we do for budgeting. And we we base our budget on the best information we have available to us at the time. And then we make changes as necessary.
Yeah, I I just mean, when I when I say that's a real number, as I mean. Like real projects that we're gonna do. And I understand that the actual contract is an estimate. But we haven't even gone through a a real list of capital projects for twenty twenty five.
Well, I do, uh, Director Clean Scale was available. And and could have gone through sort of what her. What what went into that two point three million dollar request. I don't think that we really were given an opportunity to go through that.
No, but I don't mean that. I mean, just potential. Capital projects across the board. Go ahead.
Okay, it's it's my strong opinion that we have to be working from estimates. We really can't expect staff. I mean, it I it's not a budget process if you're actually going out and then getting, I mean, you would get quotes for some things, but you don't need to have. An actual number to budget because it's a budget. It is an estimate. I would also take exception that if it's in the budget, that's the work plan. And i- if I'm voting on something to have a certain amount of streets, for example, to be done. I mean, the expectation, I think, from us and the citizens is that that work is gonna get done. Now, there's obviously stuff that comes up. If it's realistic, fine. But, I mean, what's in that budget is the work plan for if there's a fire truck in 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 the budget, the fire truck needs to get purchased. That's the work plan. It needs to get done. And we need to make sure that we are providing you with the resources in order to get that work done. And that would even include H R people to help. Get more people hired if that's if that is one of the limitations. Which I would gladly support. I would gladly support additional money for the finance department. Just so that there's more backup and more resources in there so we don't get into the kind of squeeze that we're in. This year, next year. I think that is a prudent use of money. So these are just some things I'm throwing out.
Okay, unfortunately, we're gonna have to.
I will reiterate, if you can't come to the meeting tomorrow, please email me what you're still waiting for so that I can see. Of the seventeen requests which have been satisfactory to you. With the data that we've gotten and which you would like to see more information coming in on. So email me or come to the meeting.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think this would help the finance committee as well if we didn't just know what you need, but how it impacted the budget at this point. So that when we're making these decisions, we can check it off and move forward. Because some some of these things don't seem like they're connected sometimes when we're having this conversation. So any explanation that you can give for that impact when we're having, if you can't make it helps. Because at least we can we can pull more or gather more information from from that standpoint. I just really want to get through this tomorrow. And so as much understanding we have about each of those outstanding items for anyone who can't make it. It's gonna be extremely helpful for us. And so anything that could help ties it in, connects it in any way, I think will help us get through these a lot faster.
And I think if somebody made a suggestion that made it to the sweet seventeen or whatever, they should be able to back that up. Go ahead.
And I just wanted to make a comment. This is not for the budget, but it it relates to it. It's nothing that will stop me from uh, voting on whatever needed from that seventeen. But I I just want to make it noted that I still put in requests for documentation for uh, projects and things under fifty thousand. And I have not received that yet. So I just want to put that on the table that I'm still looking for that. I was giving everybody time to compile that. Information, but I did send an email regarding that. So I just want to make a note.
All right, Council.
And separate from the seventeen questions, um, I'm still hopeful that we can get an overview of the changes that were made in the appropriations ordinance. We can compare them and see that there was, you know, two hundred thousand dollar increase or decrease or whatever. But having an overview, even if it's just one sentence, would be helpful.
All right, so we we do have to, so we are gonna have to. Come back after the regular meeting. Maybe we can try to keep that till like a half hour. That would be really nice, but we have several items on the agenda that we didn't get to, so. So I guess I'm gonna recess, council, and we're gonna head over to the regular meeting. All right, we are, uh, welcome back to Committee of the Whole. Uh, we're resuming our agenda that we didn't get to earlier. Glasses on. Okay, so we did, we did the finance committee request. We're on item number five, which is twenty twenty five goals and potential legislation. So I I don't, I mean, I have a few more. Did anybody else have anything? I don't remember. Okay, so, uh. I want to work, I got permission, I believe, to to work on the change of the budget due date. And, you know, I might add to that, that just going through this this budget process. This time, I think we we could probably benefit from doing something similar to what we did with like the legislative process. And the economic development process so that there's a very clear message from this council. About what our expectations are of what we need. By the time the budget is presented. Because, you know, ambiguity is not our friend, evidently. Maybe it's nobody's friend, but it's, so anyway, so I I am gonna work on that legislation. I did ask Councilman Cobb to put on the administrative services. A review of the section one eleven of the of our revised code.
President?
Yes.
Going back to the first thing, what what are you working on legislation exactly for the?
Uh, change, ch- change the budget due date.
Okay, what does that process look like?
So right now in the charter, it says November fifteenth or before.
No, I'm I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the expectations for what's needed for the budget.
Oh, that's, yeah, now that would be, that wouldn't be this, uh, that wouldn't be legislation. But I'd like to put together, uh, based on the things we talked about. And then have a discussion with council, what our expectations are for what it is we need for the budget. Because we didn't do that. And there are seventeen things on the, and I'm not saying we need seven, that that's not what I'm saying, just in case. Anybody's getting that impression. But if there are some things that this council feels it needs to make a decision on a budget, we should be upfront with that. We shouldn't spring that up during or after the.
I I agree with that. I think if we're gonna do that process, it's not just about what this council wants. It's the timeframe in which it needs to happen. So I would prefer that we collaborate from the beginning with the administration and not send them a list of expectations. And in the past, that's what we've done. So I would like to make sure that we start having that conversation so we're clear with the finance department so they can say, hey. This is a clear date for this. I I don't want to send them a list. And then only to have them go back and it looks like it's confrontational again. So I would like to start that conversation upfront. And I think that a good place for that might be the finance committee.
Yeah, I I mean, and that that may be as far as where it starts. I have a few things out right now, but it's gonna be a collaboration. It could, it can't be anything else.
I I was still.
I just always, I just, I just don't like to say, here's an idea, but I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna, I have no suggestions. I mean, I always liked to at least have a starting place, which I'm perfectly willing to provide. But it could, it it's gonna go wherever the seven of us want it to go.
I just know that sometimes we we've gone that route and we work together and then sometimes you you send it over to committee to discuss it. And I know you just sent something to Councilman Cobb. So if we're gonna start that process from the from the bottom, I would prefer to start it in the finance committee with all of us. I I don't want, and no offense, but I don't, sometimes you you give us a a roadmap. I do not want that in this case. We're we're dealing with whatever you came up with by yourself and then bringing to the finance committee. Because the three of us are completely separate. I would I would prefer to lead that process starting.
Well, if you're talking about the economic development, I don't know if you're alluding to something specific like that. But, you know, I don't think it's right to say we need one, but I don't have any ideas.
No, I'm I'm not saying that, but that but that conversation started if I, unless I'm wrong, in planning and development. Did it the initial conversation for those expectations at at this table. But it it sounds like we're not doing the same process here. So I'm just saying, I would I would prefer to build that out. So that we can see everyone's thought process and work together on this from the beginning versus coming with a list of anything.
I will still come with a list and I'll come to the finance committee. That's fine.
So this is similar to what we did with the development process.
Yeah, right, right, makes sense. And, you know, eventually, you know, obviously you gotta get buy in from council members and the administration. Does somebody else have their hand up? Okay. All right. Okay, so. This is not for legislation, at least not right now, but for a discussion. I would like to, I I actually had asked Addie to 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 be to to do preliminary research on spending limits. What do other cities have for their spending limits, you know, for what council signs off on? Addie did kind of a four or five, something like that. But what I would like to do is synthesize that information and have a discussion about that with this council. I don't have any legislation in mind, but I do know that. That people have asked questions about spending and I I don't really, I don't really know that I could say what an appropriate limit is. But I think it's something we should talk about because we haven't had a discussion about that. And I think in the context of our budget authority, I think we should at least have a discussion about it. Is that cool with everybody? Okay. Um, again, no legislation on that one. Sorry, I got one more, I think. Did I skip over? I do, oh, yes. I do want to revisit the inquiry legislation that I brought forward like two and a half years ago. I don't want to leave this as some kind of thing that's nebulous in anybody's mind as to when. What our expectation is, and I'm talking, now I am talking about legislation. What our oversight authority is when it comes to, and we need information to have that. We can't, we can't just say, well, we're, we have this oversight authority, but no. Defined way of accessing information. So that's one part of it. The second part of it is. Codifying our authority to get. Directors to either committee meetings, committee of the whole meetings. Or to reg- to our regular meeting to give a report to council. So let me throw that out here. Go ahead.
Okay. I want to, I want to make sure this comes off the right way because I thought about this when we talked about our two thousand twenty five goals. And after hearing this tonight, I do have one major concern. It appears that so far, everything that this council is working on is either a rollback or a change to some type of administrative power or function. Or some type of control around the budget or a shift. My concern with that is from a leadership standpoint with this council, it doesn't change anything that this council needs to function and fix itself. It seems like all of the suggestions, at least that I've heard the last two meetings, have been around. Things that impact the administration, how we might move any powers that we might have. But we don't have any structures or processes or organization around anything in terms out outside of those parameters. I I haven't heard unless I'm missing it, and please tell me if I am. Because when I brought my 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 goals to the table that week even, I didn't hear anything. That was about this council's vision or a strategy about our own process improvements, a- about community engagement, about staffing up or building up. About working together in terms of building, for for example, the process around how we select our 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 chairpeople for our committees.
Should I interject something here?
No, 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 not not now.
No, this is gonna work for years.
It's not, it's not working for my favor at all.
It will if you hurt.
I would just prefer to, so my 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 issue is, I'm hearing a vision for two thousand twenty five and things we want to work on. But those things do not positively impact this council and how it functions. It seems like, at least from what I'm just hearing from your list in the last meeting, that it's all, what what can we do in terms of. Demanding something from the administration, shifting something from the administration, even changing the amount of money that they can spend without council approval. That's all around authorities and this council's, whatever it is. I I'm telling you that it's clear to me and to some of the residents that outside of those topics, this council isn't dealing with anything that would cause it to be better organized. To be better focused. We can't sit and tell this community that outside of the things that we want to change for the administration, here are things we want to work on in this community. Here's how we want to better connect with you. Here are some staffing ideas that we have for this council to make sure that we can roll out things. Here's our process for uh, in including new council members i- in things. Here's our process for how we're gonna increase our communication. We are at risk, and and I made this very clear at the last meeting, we are at risk right now because we've made zero adjustments. When my colleagues on this council said that it was not an integrity issue, that it was a training issue. Nothing has been said or done to even correct how we deal with each other outside of the public. Or how we develop legislation or even discuss committees. And we don't need to wait un- until some private investigation is done to build in those processes. We have major open risk right now and we are not discussing anything other than. What we can do to shift or change or force the administration to do something or remove or limit authority. And I and I need you to know, uh, show me what is different than that if that's not what's what's happening. I would like to see what this council is going to do to improve how it communicates, how it communicates with each other, how we function, how we mitigate risk. But but none of that is being discussed.
Off topic.
We are not off topic because these are two thousand twenty five goals and the only thing that we've talked about.
One thing, I'm not gonna stop you from talking.
Are those legislative issues?
When when Councilman Posh, when Councilman Posh, when we get to the the part about. You know, basically having a retreat and so forth, that is a very appropriate, I think, topic. And it should be part of that. What I'm suggesting now, first of all, there. And it should be part of that. What I'm suggesting now, first of all, there is almost nothing that was done to transition this government. From a city manager form of government to a, um, other than. Other than, you know, putting mayor in where it used to say city, uh, manager. So, so these are things that should have probably been done, I would say, two, three years ago.
But we're discussing those things along with, with the charter changes and so many other things. I'm saying as, as the leadership of this council, if we're gonna be tight this year. We, we should be talking about what we wanna accomplish, how we're gonna.
There will be those.
When you talk about strategy and building a vision for that, that's not something you do at, at Councilman Posh's meeting. That's something that we should have been doing in December and January to talk about strategy for the upcoming year. We are not discussing those things. That, that's what I'm saying. We're only discussing these other changes. And to be clear, we've been talking about having this meeting for forever and it has not happened. And when I told you all that we had a risk, actual risk right now, I was advising, we need to wait till the investigation, not all of a sudden. When we're doing Posh's meeting. Now I'm at the point where I have to be clear about the fact that we have not dealt with actual risk on this council. We do not have a roadmap for how we're moving for two thousand twenty-five. And we cannot tell the residents what our plans, our focus are, our goals are, outside of changing legislation. That's gonna impact the administration. That is my problem. My concern is, nothing that we're talking about is gonna move us forward. Bring us more together cohesively or give us process improvements that we can work with, with the administration. I like those conversations to happen. That, that, and, and, and Posh's meeting is not the place to do that. Those are things that should have happened in the strategy session. For council as we're going into this year. What I'm hearing in the last two meetings is that every goal we have, again, impacts the administration. Not the community, not how we function as a council at all, or not how we look, future forward in terms of our staff.
So you're, you're, you're misstating what the purpose is. My purpose of, of bringing this up is, I wanted to hear from everybody. What, uh, what, uh, legislative initiatives do you wanna move forward? These are not all my legislative initiatives, but these are ones I'd like to work on sooner than later. So that's why I'm bringing them up now. And I'm, what I'm doing is following the process that all seven of us agreed to, which was. That we were gonna bring these up in committee of the whole before we started working on legislation. So that's what I'm doing. Okay, and it, it does, you know, this zero-sum game thing that you're saying, well, cause you're doing this, we're not doing that. I, I just don't see it that way.
It's going on the end of January. We have not talked about.
Well, that's why we're. That's why we're here. I tried to.
Last two weeks, in the last two meetings, you've only given us legislation that again, impacts or rollbacks some power or authority. Or gives council more authority, not anything that actually positively brings us together or talks about process improvement. Can't keep putting that off. We, we just can't. Right now, we don't even have a schedule.
So you don't agree, uh, so you don't agree?
It's not about, I, I'm asking, what else is there outside of that that this council's planning on doing? Cause we don't have a roadmap. So far, all of our legislation, again.
Councilman, I'm gonna follow the agenda and right now on the agenda, the item is potential legislation. And that's what I'm talking about. So, so I wanna hear.
So we're discussing potential legislation, but you stated two items that you had weren't even legislation. So that's my problem. So, so let's be honest about this.
Okay, fair enough.
I'm not going to live by a different set of rules than you. So you just corrected me and told me to pump my brakes. Because you just said we're discussing items that are just legislative. Two items, you stated out of your own mouth. We're not legislative and we discuss them anyway. You gotta stop picking and choosing. When you're gonna tell me I can't do something and when it's okay for you. These are the things that we need to talk about on this council. It, it creates this environment where it looks like you're playing games.
Okay, well, this is not a game.
Then don't tell me that we're not, we're only discussing things that are legislative items when you just did it twice. That's hypocritical.
No, what I was doing was saying, before there's any legislation, I think we should have a discussion about this. Those two items that you just brought up in committee of the whole. It's, I would consider it pre-legislation. So I, in my view, I'm still on the topic. Could, is there anybody else that wants to weigh in on the, um. Inquiry legislation that I, is every, I just wanna know, are we okay with this? Okay, anybody else?
So we're demanding them to come in even though they're doing it anyway.
I'm asking people if they're okay with me going ahead and developing this legislation.
I'd like to see it again.
Well, of course.
So, let me just, and not, maybe this relates to inquiry and now. I think it was two years ago where we had a meeting where we had all of the department heads and directors in. And we had an opportunity to ask them questions. Aside from budget hearings, that's the only time that we've really had an opportunity to get any information. From the department heads and directors. Oftentimes, the, I'm, I'm finding out information about the city. Um, from the weekly email blast that, that goes out. So, you know, there's some times that I don't feel that I know what's going on in the city. From our department heads and directors, and that needs to be addressed.
Councilman Cobb, I, I guess I'm confused about that because when we initially had this legislation, you're, you stated the exact opposite. That they were coming to the meetings and are giving this presentation. Now, what, what has changed considering they're still doing the same thing that they've been doing?
That was two years ago, alright? And I was concerned that, and I don't recall the exact specifics of it. I had some changes that I wanted to make. I was concerned that it was gonna be abused. Like I said, I, I, I wanna see what, what he has in mind. I'm just talking on the, on, my feeling is that I don't feel as informed. As I ought to be about what's going on in this city. When the city administrator gave his report last June, I think there was a lot of information that we all heard for the first time. We, we should be getting more information on a regular basis from the department heads and the directors. That's all that I'm saying. And, and if, you know, how, how, how that mechanism, uh, comes about, I don't know. But, and I'll just speak for myself, I find it frustrating and problematic. That I learned things for the first time when the city administrator gave his report last year. Anytime the public is finding stuff.
I appreciate that. I just don't like, there's a nebulous quality about how this all works. And I think it needs to be codified. I showed council legislation from Lakewood, legislation from the county. Uh, I believe it was a charter entry in Beechwood. This is not like unprecedented. It's, it, to me, this is a great way to keep order and cohesiveness. This is not punitive in any way. It sets exactly expectations and boundaries. So we know what's going on. This, this, this thing that we might get it or we might not get it or, you know, if it's Saturday or if I like you this week. I mean, that's, that doesn't work and it, you know, I don't think anything's changed. Councilwoman Larson, you okay with this?
I'm okay with bringing legislation back for consideration. I also believe we'll be speaking about it in the charter review that we're doing this Saturday. Because it's in that amendment, the bucket, bucket one.
That's definitely part of it. What I'm, what I'm gonna be proposing and what I did propose two and a half years ago. Was, um, in ordnance. Petrus?
I mean, um, like every piece of legislation, I'm gonna take a look at it, see, you know, if there are things that, you know. I wanna have added or changed or removed, but yeah, I'm going to consider anything that's brought up.
Alright, thank you. Um, is there anybody else that has any potential legislation that they wanna start on with the law director they wanna bring up? Here, yeah.
No, go ahead. I, I had made the comment last week that, uh, last meeting that I'm working with the two committees I have, the citizens committees. Climate and environmental sustainability committee and transportation mobility. I suspect you'll see legislation coming out of there because they're working closely with administration, with Andy Boateng and also with Mr. Horgan. When he can, is available. So, do I need to, as I'm anticipating legislation is gonna come rolling out? Do you, you want me to let you know what I'm anticipating or?
You can, you can use, uh, you know, the, the various methods that we talked about, uh, in our roadmap. Uh, if you wanna introduce it in your committee, cause I know you go to their committee meetings, but if you wanna introduce it in your committee. You can certainly do it that way if you wanna, and then bring it to committee of the whole. Or you can, I mean, that's up to you. I don't fly with that, yeah.
No, I was just gonna say, are we repeating what we said, uh, far as the legislation that I was gonna be working on? Far as finishing up the dog park, uh, the, the, um, lifeguards, um, the, um. Living wage, those different pieces of legislation. Do I need to say those are the things I wanna continue?
No, because you brought them up last.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, okay.
I, I was just kinda recombating. Yeah, alright. Um, alright, scheduling, uh, council, the administration. Vacation meeting, Councilman Posh?
Well, I do feel like we've kicked the can on this item enough. Um, the, you know, this isn't my meeting, this is our meeting. I wanna make that straight. If people think this is my meeting, I don't want to talk to them. Cause this is our meeting, just saying. And it was suggested because of some things even that Anthony mentioned that we need to work out. And that is kinda coming up with some of our expectations. Anthony's not the only council member around this table that has actually. Um, you know, discussed publicly about the fact that we just don't have the right expectation. You brought up a, a good example earlier, uh, tonight, uh, Tony, about the budget. I mean, we clearly had miss, miss expectations when, I, I'm, I'm not gonna walk down the path, I'm just gonna say that. There were some expectations that didn't align. Um, I would suggest that we do this meeting, I, I think Addie's gonna have to put together a due to poll for it. Um, I mean, I think in my mind, getting the budget passed is the highest priority that this council needs to have. It's secondary to that. It's important, but if we didn't have all this rigmarole with the budget, we could have had this done already. It could have been done and we couldn't be moving forward. And I'm sour about that because. We spend so much time trying to rework stuff for this budget and we haven't been able to do our work. But we're gonna get this budget done. We're gonna get that behind us. And next on my list, this is, this is, this is important to me. I hope it's important to everybody.
So would you like to schedule, uh, like, how, I mean, what does everybody wanna, I mean, I'd like to do it, but.
It's not, it's not a retreat. It's not a retreat. It doesn't have to be. It, it probably needs to happen over, I think, two or three days, which is what I initially suggested. Um, I, I think we need, I, I think I suggested a ninety-minute window of time. I'd have to go back and look at my notes.
You mean two or three ninety-minute sessions?
Well, I think we start with one, you know, maybe we get a backup. Uh, I think it's the kinda thing where we all need to be there. I mean, if it's something where someone can't be there, I think you don't wanna do it over Zoom. I think, I think the process that I laid out.
That included an agenda, correct?
There, there was an agenda I shared with everybody. I think we share it. I don't know how I shared it with everybody, actually. I think I shared it with everybody. I made it out, right, because I wanted to make sure that it was discussed in, in public session. Um, I could get with Addie tomorrow, uh, as far as the timeframes, but I do think ninety minutes. You know, a timer running, so we don't overstate. We, we, we don't. Think everybody needs to get equal time on this, okay? And I think someone that's gonna speak twice as much doesn't deserve twice as much time. We all deserve the same amount of time.
Alright, Councilman.
Just so I'm clear, how, how much time are you, are you saying for this?
I would think in a block of ninety minutes.
Okay, because this is my concern. We had time to schedule charter from nine AM to three. But we didn't have time to do this before the beginning of the year. And now we're saying, if we still, if it wasn't for the budget, we wouldn't have time. This is what we should have been doing instead of Saturday, doing the charter. Organizing and bringing some structure to this council so that we can tighten this up. So I'm here to tell this council, if you're, this is just, this, this is business, period. We have plenty of time to do this in advance of two thousand and twenty-five. We have plenty of time to do it now. And if we have time to schedule something from nine AM to three PM to talk about charter changes, we absolutely should have done this. So my question for council leadership is, we do this at any time, do you have expectations for this council? Do you have visions or goals for this council that you're gonna provide to this as we go through this? Or the expectation that we're supposed to figure this all out as a body together? And even though you have legislative ideas, you don't have any goals or any ideas or any visions or desires for this council. I would like to know that because that, that's my issue. As council president and vice president, I would like you to come to this meeting and tell me, at least, give me a sense of how we're gonna function and work. That's gonna be different than last year. Otherwise, I, I'm gonna be very, very uncomfortable with that. Because a- as leaders of this council, which I did not vote for either, so this, that, we know this. But if we're gonna come together and do something, I would like to hear more about a vision for what you're gonna do with this council to bring us together than just what we're gonna do. To roll back whatever's going on in the administration. That's what I would like to hear. I didn't hear it in October, didn't hear it in November, didn't hear it in December. And there is a leader across any organization that wouldn't tell you that they don't have a vision or a plan going into a year for two things. Number one, the impact that they're gonna have, and number two, so how they're gonna work collaboratively with everyone at this table. You haven't done that, and that's just the truth. You have not done that this year. You didn't do it last year. And you keep kicking it down, waiting on his meeting to do this. My question is, as president of council, what are you going to do? To bring this council together to help us collaboratively work? What changes or adjustments are you going to make? Because even for those selections for this, the chairmans for the committee, you didn't even meet with me to ask me before. So all the committees that I was on serving before, all the committees are, my, my resume and I'm educated and experienced. You removed me from and didn't even tell me it was gonna happen. That kinda stuff can't continue to happen if you wanna build trust. Cause right now, I got a bunch of people wondering how you even made that selection. So there's things like that we need to talk about. How are we gonna do these things in public? So there is nothing in hiding about how you made the decisions or who you spoke with. Prior to making decisions about everything from committee assignments on down. But that needs to come from leadership. That cannot come from this table. I wanna know how you're gonna do that. You're the last person to talk in the meetings as you just stated. The buck stops with you. This isn't just gonna be some, we're having these conversations of whatever we come up with. I wanna know what else you have as council president outside of legislative ideas for the administration and the charter. That's gonna bring us together tighter. Because telling me that this didn't happen because of the budget, uh, Councilman Posh is an excuse. We have plenty of time and we're proving it because we're here on Saturday from nine to three. We had time to do this. And I wanna know where we're, we're headed. Before the end of January, we need some kinda roadmap. We don't have a roadmap for our testing process improvements. We don't have a roadmap for risk management. And we don't have a roadmap for how we're gonna work together. That has to come from council leadership. And if it doesn't, I need to know what we're gonna do to make this happen. I'm one person. I'm one person, voted out on everything. But I, I, I need to know how in the world we're going to move forward. And I, I don't hear, I don't hear a map, I don't hear a plan, I don't hear idea. I don't hear anything.
Well, the majority of this council works very well together, number one.
Yeah, and private meetings apparently. If, if I gotta show up to a private meeting today, then that's a problem.
You have not been recognized. We're, 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 wait a minute. We're not, this isn't the way it works. Come on. Everybody else was, was waiting to be called on and then spoke and it wasn't this back and forth. So we just don't agree. We don't see things the same way. That's gonna happen. Of course, we're gonna show up and we're gonna have ideas and I hope everybody else does as well. Did, Councilman Posh, do you wanna say something?
No, I think we need to move on.
Yeah, so do I. Um, so, so we're, you're gonna get with Addie and.
We'll get some, I'll work with Addie to get it on the table.
Alright, so.
Let me ask a question.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilman Posh, do you look at this to be like a, uh, retreat, but no, okay, just a regular meeting?
You know what, we need to review, uh, can, can you just resend the?
I get it, Addie, too.
Yeah, cause I think you, you passed it out. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, but it was like two months ago, right?
Maybe a little longer.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
No, and, and, and listen, it, it, it is a shame that it got put off this far. Uh, council calendar, so, we need legislation for that?
You skipped one.
Oh, oh, sorry. I'm so sorry. Potential communication consultant for council. Uh, this had been brought up. I think that's another thing that can, that got kicked down the road a little bit. Must say brought up in November or.
When we were talking about budget for council?
Yeah, um, you know, we, I mean, I think we need it, but like. You know, I wouldn't wanna hire anybody like for hours, you know, specific hours or anything, but I certainly know that. Um, we need to communicate with the public. You know, the e-newsletter is, is, may or may not. I would say more likely may not be a, a, an avenue for us, but there are other avenues. Um, you know, I can't, you know, I don't wanna be that person, you know, I don't think. I mean, you know, I'm just one of seven anyway. Um, so, uh. Is there an appetite for this, for hiring somebody to do work on like kinda piecework, so to speak? Go ahead.
Well, I mean, I think ideally, you know, I go back and I see your public email that you sent out. That you had asked, oh, and then the mayor copied everything else over the weekend where the, the mayor did not want you. The mayor did not wanna use your words.
Yeah.
In a communication piece. In a communication piece. And I would have much rather see the response to be, okay, you have the right to put something in a communication piece, but I specifically take offense to X, Y, and Z, and you guys collaborate together to kinda come up with what would go into that communication piece. I don't wanna find this council to be in a position where we as a team, a collective administrative and council team, are shut out from using the communications department. But if that's the way it's gonna be, then we need to hire our, our own communication person.
Yeah, well, I don't think, I don't think, um, maybe any mayor is, I don't know if there's anything that would compel a mayor to have to speak, you know, or allow council to use something like the newsletter, you know, nice. But given that we are a separate branch of government, and we do wanna make statements and communicate with the public, and our point of view, I believe is important as a co-equal branch of government, you know, how do we do it? You know?
That goes back to my issue, one of the concerns that I had is number one, I, I believe the statement that you sent over to go out was inaccurate. But number two, I noticed that it said, uh, uh, I don't know if it said president and vice president, or just one, that, that's also my concern.
No, that said, it just said council president.
Your, your job stops and ends at creating the agenda and running the meeting. So when you send out something like that, it appears that you are speaking on behalf of all of us. There again, is no process for this. So if someone who isn't in a majority like me disagrees with that statement, the public won't know.
So I'm not making it up, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So again, so my, my, my question is, we, why did you decide that? We, we haven't decided as a council, when you send out a statement, is it on behalf of all of us? Are you saying that each of us should be able to, on the newsletter, to send out our own individual statements, or whatever this looks like? Cause if that's, if that's not the case, then I think that anything that rolls out coming from this council and using it as a title, we should be reading prior to it getting released anyway, otherwise, we should each have the opportunity to release information. Because when you speak that way, there's an assumption that you're speaking on behalf of all of us, even if you're saying it's just coming from the president of council, we all wouldn't have that same level of freedom. And I disagreed with that statement that you made in that case, so had it went out in the newsletter, we might've had some problems.
Okay.
So my question is, whatever communication form we have, is it leaving open a door for us to communicate separately? Or are we all still communicating through council leadership?
So, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make the argument about the newsletter, I, let's just, I'd just rather just skip it, you know? I think what we oughta do is, uh, and, and, you know, you speak often, and, I mean, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but a lot of times, I, I think it's pretty obvious that you're just speaking for yourself. So, you know, I don't, I don't.
This is different than something that has a fifty something thousand residents.
I don't know why anybody would, uh, assume that when you're speaking, you know, you're speaking for all of council. Hopefully, people don't do that.
I'm not the president of council, so you can't, you can't juxtapose me with yourself, that's, that's not fair for several reasons. Because they, they, they don't have the same.
I don't wanna go, I don't wanna do the back.
They don't have the same.
Councilman, I, I don't, I understand that's your.
So don't, don't minimize my points.
I'm not minimizing it, I'm just saying, I don't wanna go back and forth. Um, I just wanna know, right now, do we want to hire somebody to do communications for council? That's what I wanna know, yeah.
I'm gonna say yes, but I have to tell you, you speak for council, you are the president of council, you speak for council.
And that's the problem.
We don't like it, we can get rid of our president.
Then that's what we should do then, because he does not speak for all of council. Then we should, then we should have a conversation about that, and that's not what the charter states, at all.
With the law director about that last statement.
Yes, so somebody please clarify that for the public.
Oh, you mean his, Cosmo Pash?
Cause this is wrong.
Go ahead.
So, so, um, the, the charter and the, um, ordinances in chapter one eleven um, define the role of the president principally as presiding at meetings.
Correct.
And, and preparing an agenda with the clerk. Um, I understand there's a, a review of chapter one eleven that may be upcoming, that could be something you look at, but there is no, uh, authority, uh, presently for the president to speak on behalf of council in a formal authorized way.
And let me make it clear that, that I'm not seeking that.
Under, under, I just wanted to, to be clear, because I think there, you know, there, there, that, that point was, was raised, that issue, and so I just wanted to clarify what the, the parameters of it are currently.
Yeah, so.
Um, and, and then also with regard to hiring a consultant, and this may be parsing your words, but I think what you're, what you're asking is, is there support to move forward with the process of considering and potentially hiring a communications consultant? Cause no one's gonna go out and hire someone without council action, yada, yada, yada.
Right, right, thank you for that clarification.
And if, and if you do that, and I'm sorry, um, it will be important, I think, for, um, Open Meetings Act-related reasons to determine who communicates with that consultant. Because it will not be possible for folks to collaborate and like sort of, you know, send thoughts and, and so, and, and communications to a consultant, have them put that together, you're gonna have to figure a way, out a way of managing that communication with the communications consultant in a way that comports with the OMA.
And, and you know, I could see this being part of, uh, that, you don't wanna call it a retreat, but that get-together, you know, because that's a vision for council, in a sense, you know? How do we wanna communicate with the public, yeah?
Just like to note that the last city council president, on her own, negotiated a memorandum of understanding with the administration about how this body would work with it without really consulting these folks. Um, but, um, I think on the topic of hiring a communications consultant, I think that my belief is that if we are paying one point whatever million dollars for personnel in the communications department, that that department ought to serve us as well, more than just videotaping our meetings. I think that we ought to have a place in the newsletter, I think that it's absolutely outrageous that we don't. I think that it's outrageous that so many people tell me that they perceive it as a political microphone. I think that that's totally unacceptable, and most rich residents feel that way. So if it's the case that we cannot, you know, have an opportunity to place things in the newsletter, then I suppose that, that it would be appropriate for us to, to hire someone.
Where, where did you get this statement from, that most residents feel this way? We gotta stop this, so did you take a survey? Did you ask them? If you don't have any.
In my judgment, from my conversations with people.
That's not, that, that's, then that's an opinion, then let's not speak for forty something thousand people.
I think, I think, I think the reality is.
Because it's convenient, we gotta, we're, it's, it's gonna be a level of accountability to say.
I, I know that, I think. There are lots of things.
Don't say all people.
There are lots of, I didn't say.
I don't paint, I don't paint that like that, I, I don't, I don't survey forty thousand people, tell me that they care.
Councilman, you make sweeping judgments regularly.
To the people at this table whose facts I see in front of my face, not the residents who haven't told me anything through a survey. That's the second time you've done it, you did it in front of the library board, stop saying what the majority of present, residents want. You don't speak for the majority of residents, it's not fair. And just because it seems to help your point, it doesn't make it okay. You have not asked the majority of residents, so don't make these statements.
I didn't say majority of.
Alright, go ahead.
You did.
I didn't.
You did twice.
I said, my sense is.
Okay, can we, as, the mayor's gonna talk, and we, we need to kinda wrap this up.
So I, I, I just wanted to clarify some things. Um, one, I, I think that we, as a community, selected a particular form of government in two thousand and nineteen, and the expectation, uh, of that form of government is that a mayor, and it says it pretty explicitly in the charter language, is the, uh, official and ceremonial head of the city. Um, I, I do, I, I lead the city administration. The charter makes it very explicit that, um, council as a whole, or any member of council, is prohibited from giving orders to the employees, uh, of the mayor. I think that the, um, the information that, um, is provided by the city through whatever means it is, whether it's the city's official Facebook page or the city's, um, newsletter that goes out, um, is intended to reflect the voice of the city. And as the mayor, I am the primary spokesperson for the city, that is part of the mayor's responsibility. I recognize that when it comes to governing, the council, as any legislative body, is a co-equal branch in that. The branch has its particular role, and I cannot infringe on that role in the same way that the council cannot and should not infringe on mine. Um, but that we have to work together, that we are all necessary pieces of governing this community. Um, but that does not speak to the idea that there should be some necessary inclusion of, um, any particular worldview or, or position on a policy, um, that is perhaps in contradiction to the position that the administration holds, the administration that, that I lead. Um, so, uh, I, I respect council's desire, and I understand council's desire to be included in that way, and that's why I have offered to anyone, um, if there is some message that you wish to be included in the newsletter that the administration sends out, the voice of the city, for which I am the primary spokesperson as the mayor, um, I am absolutely willing to, to take a look at each request in good faith, and if I believe that it is in line with the position of the city, if I believe that it is to the benefit of the city, I don't have any problem whatsoever including it in the, the e-newsletter, the city news. I don't have a problem with that at all, but it is a case-by-case basis, and it is important to recognize that as the mayor, I am the primary spokesperson for the city, the city government. That's not, it's not vague or, or in question in that role. It, it doesn't belong to me personally, it belongs to the role. So I, I, I wanna point that out, and, and I've expressed that to you, um, the particular messaging that you provided, and it, and it was like, it was Friday afternoon. I don't know that I had a great deal of time to go back and forth and word smith or anything like that before City News went out, but, you know, that, that particular message, I believe, was factually inaccurate. And I do believe, we may have a difference of opinion about this, but I do believe that it was unnecessarily antagonistic to the city.
That we have a, that we have a big difference.
That's fine, we do, we, we can, we can differ on that.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't need to browbeat you into submission on my opinion on this, but that was my opinion. I felt that that was unnecessarily antagonistic, and I thought that as a result, I didn't believe it was appropriate to go out in a communication for the city of Cleveland Heights, for which I am the primary spokesperson.
I, I appreciate all that, and I, it's, you know, largely, I believe, I, I, I agree with everything you said, except the part about it being antagonistic. And, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not arguing any of that about the primary spokesperson. I think when you send out emails, uh, uh, e-newsletters, that state council's position in your own words, and it's frightfully different than the way I see it, um, then it, it's not like I think, oh, I oughta have the same weight as the mayor in the newsletter. What I do think is, occasionally, there does need to be a council voice, and it doesn't need to be overwhelm anything that you're, you know, sa, saying, or outweighed or anything, but there, there are times when I do believe a counterbalance to you giving your opinion about what council's saying, and me, not just as the leader of council, but just as a council person, just go, whoa, come on, dude. Not, sorry about the dude thing, but you know, okay, go ahead.
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor, if I could, so is it okay for us to assume that communications coming through the official channels of this city, whether that's the e-newsletter or social media channels, will not be antagonistic towards this council?
Now, that I can't say, and so, I'll, I'll put it this way, let me, let me, let me make it clear, let's say hypothetically, there is a membership of council that is vehemently anti-abortion. Somehow that happens. Um, the position of the administration is that the people's right to an abortion, to make that choice for themselves, uh, is, is not to be violated. Um, and, and so, from my perspective is, if, if a council decided that it was going to pass a resolution in support of a complete ban on abortion, then I would probably want the city administration to make a statement about that, and that statement might be antagonistic. But again, it is the prerogative of the mayor who speaks for the city as the primary spokesperson to make that position known, and sometimes that position might be antagonistic.
Councilman, did you wanna say something?
Alright, so I'm, I'm pulling up the Facebook posting from the city, December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, and I don't know how any person can objectively look at this posting and not say that it's not political and not antagonistic.
Can you explain, can you define political, please?
Well.
Like electoral politics, or are you talking about something else?
It, it is editorializing a point of view to say, you know, and I'm quoting here, this arrogant paternal, paternalistic dismissal doesn't have to be the story. It's up to us to convince the council six to develop something we youngsters call self-awareness and knock it off. And then the, um, the graphics, you know, damn right, I'm the problem for an irresponsible city council. Your own city council fully funded their own salaries for two thousand and twenty-five. They refuse to fully fund salaries for police officers, firefighters, and service workers. The majority of residents that commented on this post thought it was inappropriate.
How many was that?
There's two hundred and twenty-two comments that are here.
Individual residents.
And I, I don't know how many, I haven't counted, I just pulled it up to look, but the same thing. So, you know, to say that, that, what was, that, you know, the city, uh, airwaves and social media, you know, aren't, aren't, they're, they're, there's, they're not one hundred percent objective and unbiased.
Yeah, I think, I think, um, you know, I, I said this to you in an email, like, within the last couple of days. You know, I, I don't think you see what, you know, the antagonistic things that come out, and, you know, obviously, you, I think you see antagonists when there is none, but that's just, that's just talk, that's just opinion about how we see things. I know we see things differently, sometimes, you saw maybe fifteen minutes ago, there are times, obviously, when we see things similarly. I mean, it's, you know, that's kinda life, but what I wanna know is, what do we wanna do? Do we wanna have a, a communications consultant that's gonna work for council and?
Yes.
And, and, uh, you know, if we are, um, why don't we talk about this at the, what do you wanna call it? I'm sorry, I don't wanna use the word retreat.
I, expectations meeting.
At, at the expectations meeting, um, a, as to how, you know, what that would look like and what the purpose would be. Because I, I really can't, we can't do that now. I mean, just, I just wanna know, should we move forward with it?
I think it's worth moving forward with it, I think at one time, we all talked about it, and some would agree to having someone to do some communication for council, even if it was an intern. We talked about that, we all, all, just about, I believe, I remember all seven of us agreeing to some type of communication. We just had to figure out how and what, and so forth.
Right. So let's use that to.
Then we need a job description.
Yeah, right, and I think that's gonna come out of a conversation. Um, I, 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 you know, I don't think anybody should be putting together a job description until we talk about what the actual scope of work would be.
Oh, Mr. President, I'm sorry, there was a, there was a statement that was made earlier that I, I do feel the need to correct the record. There was a, a bit of a factual inaccuracy that I just wanted to.
Is it about the communication?
Kind of, yes, it's, uh, it's relative to how that is managed, um, you know, by council, um, among the council members. Uh, there was a statement made about the first council president under this form of government, Melody Joy Hart. Um, and I think it was about negotiating an MOU. Now, I know that the meetings that I had with the council, uh, officers at the time, uh, included Mr. Cobb and, uh, Ms. Hart. Um, my assumption is that they worked on that together, but, but my assumption was also that this was not something they were doing sort of on behalf of the city council, it was an ask for me to work within certain, a certain framework in order to standardize requests from the council. Um, you know, I, as many of you may recall, some of you may not, cause you weren't on council at the time, um, about seven days in to the new form of government, I sent an email basically that, that requested that if council is gonna reach out to directors, and this is by the way, at the request of directors, uh, if council's going to reach out to directors, then I was asking that, one, uh, directors indicated that email was preferred, and two, that if you guys would be so kind as to copy me on questions so that I could then be included on the answer. so that I could then be included on the answers, so that a new mayor in a new form of government might continue to be in the loop as I was learning things too and developing relationships with the directors who, who work for me. Um, and so, you know, that is what I actually wanted, I just wanted to be copied on communication so that I could hear the questions, cause it might be a question I didn't know I had, and hear the answers. And then that blew up somehow, uh, until ultimately, um, the council president and vice president um, asked to create this whole inquiry, uh, framework, um, in order to make that easier. I think, uh, Councilman Cobb probably has more insight into how that was developed than me. Cause it was sort of brought to me almost whole cloth. But, um, I, I never thought that it was negotiated on behalf of the council. I know that those sorts of decisions have to be made in a council meeting, it was really just an ask to adhere to a particular framework that I didn't think worked, by the way, I think that it would've just been better if people had just copied me.
Yeah, I think.
Simple enough request.
I, I under, I, I understand.
I just wanted to clear up.
Yeah, and, 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 and I just feel now compelled to kinda clear up a little bit of what you said. You know, the rightfully and, and, and kind of just the way it works, you know, you got, you got the two people in leadership doing something. People are gonna, you know, I think, I don't think it's a large leap to say they're speaking for council. But even if they weren't intending to, I know the fact that the then council president wrote an article that they, that, that she put in the Heights Observer that said that, that the council was informed all the way through this process, when there was never one conversation. That has nothing to do with you, not a thing to do with you, but I'm, I'm letting you know that it was portrayed as a collaboration when it wasn't at all. And I'm not saying there was a degree of collaboration, I'm saying there was zero.
And so what, what might?
Not true.
And that's wrong, that's not the way that you wanna do business here.
Right, 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 okay, um, so, uh, council calendar, we need to do legislation for that?
For the July?
Yeah, for the July, please.
I already put it together, so.
Okay. Uh, preview of charter review commission recommendations.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna send you guys a, I've been working on a summary of where we've gotten so far. And we'll send it to you hopefully tomorrow.
The best thing we could do is, is like, just review what's been done so far, just so that like, you know, we're jumping into the rope with a little bit of momentum. So nine o'clock, anybody who's, I feel bad if you're still watching. But nine o'clock on Saturday, we are meeting to do three hours in the morning and two in the afternoon on the charter review. And, and one of the reasons this got so prioritized was because we did agree to a timeline with the law director. And it was, in my view, and I think the council, the majority of councils view that if we didn't start diving into this now, we would not meet the April deadline. Director Hannah, that you, it's not a, it's not a hard deadline, but it's, it's, it's your suggested deadline for the work that you'll need to do after council's done.
Yeah, I think that's a fair characterization of the discussion. And it's all driven by the, uh, Ohio constitutional deadlines for submitting charter amendments to the, the electors, which ha, which can't happen later than sixty days prior to the election where they're gonna be considered. So if you're looking at November, you're looking at the first week of essentially Labor Day.
Yeah.
So it's just a question of priority setting.
Yeah, and, and I'm not diminishing, you know, Councilman Pash's initiative to get us together, to do some planning, but this has a harder deadline, and, 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 you know, and it's a shame that, that.
And so the April was just a, a request that we have an opportunity to get you materials, given the, the summer schedule so that you could work through things in a deliberate way and still pass resolutions timely.
Okay.
Mr. President, one, one thing to note, there is still the question of prioritization, um, which is sort of independent of the, the deadlines or the, the scheduling. It's a question of, is this, despite a deadline, a higher priority to accomplish than the variety of other things that maybe don't have a deadline, but are probably really important to accomplish? Like a cohesive council and a set of procedures and rules.
You, you know, you're, you kind of often in our leadership meetings talk about how much walking and gum chewing you have to do, and that's what we have to do too.
Okay.
You know, um, so, uh, lastly, uh, Mayor, did you wanna say anything about the MLK event on, and, and council's participation in that?
Yeah, so I don't.
I wrote that under other, by the way.
Like based on, based on the history of these things, I can't, um, really know about council's, um, availability or, or, or desire to, to be included. Um, but I, I do want everybody to know that, and based on like last year, it was just me and council president. But I, I would love if council members would be willing to come, uh, you know, in past years, we'd have council members coming up and presenting, um, with kids and, and that kinda things. I, I'd love it if council members would be willing to, to join us. I assume, or will you, council president, you'll be there?
Yeah, alright, no, we, we, we had an agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know.
If the other council, yeah, and so please, I, I would love it if, if council members would, would be willing to, to join us. Um, I don't have the exact time in front of me. Um, but it's relatively, you know, low stakes, you know, where it's, it's a bunch of cool kids, um, you know, who, who did art and poetry and, and essays, and it's, um, really great to hear them and it, it sort of helps you feel inspired about the future, so.
I would like to say, Mayor, it's only two days out and I cannot be available, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We've got late notice for me.
Six, six P M.
At six, okay.
Alright, anything else under other? Alright, thank you so much, this meeting is adjourned at nine fifty one.